Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's special meeting on the North Forty Study Session. Before we begin, if you could all just stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and our deputy clerk, if you wouldn't mind just doing our roll call for tonight?
Good evening. Councilmember Steve Leonardi.
Here.
Councilmember Marcia Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Spector.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rob Rennie.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Mariko Sayak.
I'm here. I'm moving. So before we get into the North Forty Study Session, I did want to spend some time recognizing some amazingly brilliant youth in our community. These people, we have, one, two, three, four, five, we have eight individuals that were part of the 2017 Synopses Silicon Valley Science and Engineering Championship, and tonight we have five of them. They are Los Gatos students, some at our public school, some of our private, but they're all our residents, our students, and they're all brilliant. And so I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew who they were, and I will ask them to come up with a commendation, and just because it's so fascinating, I'm going to read the title of their contest and have the entire council just congratulate them to let you know how proud we are of you and hope you do wonderfully brilliant things in the future. Okay, so the first person, Catherine Bowden. And so Catherine is currently a senior at Los Gatos High School. Her project was a biocompatible micro droplet, a paradigm shift in the reversal of atherosclerosis. And I did have to ask her how to say atherosclerosis if it was correct and what it actually meant. So congratulations.
Okay, if you could just stand and stay, and then we can get all of them.
Krish Kapadia. Krish, while a 10th grader at Harker School, hit the title of his project, "The Use of Salivary Proteins as Novel Biomarkers for Concussion." Thank you. Avi Patel. And while a 10th grader at Los Gatos High School, the title of his project, "Confirming the Coevolution of Supermassive Black Holes and Dark Matter Halos by Analyzing the Structure of Galaxy Bulges."
Very impressive.
Pujita Tangarala, excuse me. Okay, I think you might be our young guest. While a 7th grader at Challenger, the title of her project, "A Green Low-Cost Absorbent for the Removal of a Dye from Aquia Solutions," very impressive, thank you. And then Arnav Ghatani. And actually, Arnav, what grade are you?
I'm sophomore.
Sophomore, so as a freshman, and Arnav, tell us the title, the name of the title of your project, or what it was about.
It's the water conservation, it's a psychological water conservation using a meter.
Very cool. Congratulations. And so once again, take a look at, these are our future scientists, and so congratulations.
Okay. So you guys are welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go. I know homework piles up, but it's all up to you, but thank you again for bringing them. So as you know, tonight we have one agenda item, but before we do so, we have verbal communications. Do I have any speaker cards? No speaker cards for verbal communications, so we will go straight into potential amendments to the North Forty specific plan. This has, this was continued from October 3. There were several questions that we had of staff, and so we will go into the staff report. Just a reminder for those in the audience, there is new material. I'm so sorry, closed session report.
It's not on the list.
Yeah.
Everybody's on the same page trying to get your attention.
Exactly. And I just focused everyone out. So before we get into the details of the process, closed session, Mr. Schultz.
Prior to tonight's regular session, council met in closed session to discuss real property negotiations. No action was taken that requires reporting under the Brown Act.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize for that. And so as I mentioned, we do have new material, so because of the new material, we will open for public discussion. So after we have the staff report, we will open for our public hearing, and everyone will have an opportunity to speak for three minutes, and then we'll close that and we'll go back to council for staff discussion and future direction. Okay, so Mr. Paulson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. Very briefly, on October 3, council met to consider potential amendments. They received public testimony and requested a number of items, additional information on a number of items. So staff has brought forward much of that information via the staff report for this evening's matter. Additionally, there was a desk item prepared today and distributed that included information on retail. And so we also have with us tonight Tony Diamond from HTL Hospitality Advisors, and he will come forward. In addition to that, we have staff from Economic Vitality, as well as Parks and Public Works, to answer any additional questions. And with that, we can move right into Mr. Diamond's presentation.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Diamond. And if you could just introduce yourself at the podium, and after your presentation, I'm sure our council members will have questions of you, as well as of your report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilman. My name is Tony Diamond. I am a partner in HTL Hospitality Advisors. We're a nationwide firm that does only hotels. We are a full-service real estate company, so we do acquisitions and dispositions, as well as feasibility studies, market studies, and management. My expertise is primarily in the asset management field. I currently do asset management for the city of San Jose on the Hayes Mansion off of Blossom Hill Road. We've been in business since 2001. We've done about 750 feasibility studies during that period of time. So we've had quite a lot of experience helping people doing their job of trying to decide whether they should develop or not. So we had a very narrow question asked of us by the city as to whether or not they, there was a feasibility of possibly doing a hotel in the North Forty section of the 20-some-odd acres that are remaining, and whether or not that would be feasible to do. We basically took information that we had on our files, as well as getting new information about what was going on in the San Jose area, as well as this area here, Cupertino, Campbell, just about all the cities around, what the occupancy and rates were doing for the hotels, and what the anticipated amounts would be for a hotel if it was to come into this particular area. The site itself. Let me go on here to the, is that going to do it for me? Just this button. No, that's a pointer, sorry. There we go. Yeah. Apologize. Okay, we did an area overview initially, which contained all of these.
And Mr. Diamond, if you want to take the microphone, so as you're, that way we can hear every word you say, and we have this being recorded.
Turn around so much.
Thank you.
Let me walk over here, too. Can you all see that? Okay. We looked at all the major cities' generators that were going to bring business to the areas. What we found really is a really good unemployment rate, much better than the national. It's very tight in this particular area, which bodes well for future development of any kind, not necessarily hotels. The site evaluation here, here's your site, right here, right here, number one. There's a hospital right here, the red one. And these are the other major generators for jobs in the area, Netflix being the largest. The site itself, being here, is visible from two freeways, 17 and 85. It has access roads from both of those that will allow people to get into that particular area fairly easily. So questions about ingress egress and putting in exits are not necessary here. It's already done. We wanted to find out which hotels would be competitive to this particular site if the hotel was to be built. So we selected the ones that are closest, obviously, which are the Courtyard in San Jose, Doubletree in Campbell, the Hotel Los Gatos here in town, the Larkspur Landing in Campbell, the Toll House Hotel, which is in here, located here, and also the Valencia Hotel. We included the Valencia because it's an upper upscale property and is in an area that seems to be envisioned by your plan of commercial, retail, office, and residential. And this, this particular area that the Valencia is in has all the characteristics that you could have here in this particular location. Also, it gave us an upper end in terms of the scale, ADR, and occupancy. We looked at the peninsula market performance, and you can see that it went up and down with various problems. In 2009, it really dropped off face to the earth at 56 percent, and then it started to come back, but it's taken a while for it to come back. By 2013, however, it was back above 75 percent. For hotels, that's very, very good. When you get to an 80 percent occupancy in hotels in an area, you're basically reaching saturation point. You really can't get much more than 80 percent. You have a demand issue at that level. But in these numbers, what it shows us is that the occupancy is there. With the occupancy, the question is, is the demand there, and will they pay for staying in the properties? Here we see in 2016, the average ADR. ADR is average daily rate that anyone would pay, and you take all of the deals that you can get. If you look at travel, travel sites, you get a hotel for $49.99 and things like that. Well, in San Jose and the peninsula, $207 was the average ADR. Pretty good. And basically, you have to call two weeks in advance just to get that. If you multiply occupancy and rate, you get what's called RevPAR, and RevPAR is revenue per available room. So if you have 1,000 hotel rooms, that's the revenue that you're going to get. In this particular case, whoops, go back. In this particular case, $165. The interesting point here, however, is that the percentage is starting to drop. What we're finding is that the cyclical business that hotels are in, which is a parabolic, every five, seven years, you get a peak, and then it starts to go down, and starts to come back up again. Well, it looks like you're starting to get into that trough now. Takes a while for it to get there, and it might not be a trough, it may continue to grow, but we have been in the longest growth spurt for this particular area for a long time. And this area is not recession-proof, but it's doing pretty well. Here's the SDR, another buzzword for hotels. Smith Travel Research is a data collector. They get hotel information from just about every hotel in every city around the country, and they are the people that combine all these reports together, and they can give you information on a series of cities, a series of hotels, the types of hotels, all kinds of data. They mix it together so you can't tell what a particular hotel does, but you can tell what a type of hotel does, or what a city does. So here, we wanted to see in terms of what the upper upscale was going to do and where they were in 2016. This is discretionary income and people on expense accounts. And 78 percent, $225, $176 in RevPAR. These are exceptional numbers. And what happens when you have these kinds of numbers is you have development happening within a period of 24 to 36 months. Somebody's going to come in and develop some property somewhere because there's demand, not necessarily here, but where they can find a spot. This is really talking about, again, what we just chatted about, the competitive market performance. Let's look at just the bottom of what it's been doing, and you can see that over here, the percent change of 2.9 percent is starting to slow down. Now what does that mean for a future development? Well, if you were to start the project today and build it, and you opened up a year from now, which is unlikely, you could have a problem with getting this particular rate because it looks like the market's starting to drop. Typical hotel construction is 18 to 24 months, so you're two years away, plus you have to get entitlements and plans and all those things. So you're really probably three to four years, maybe even five years away. So by that time, these numbers will probably turn around and start going back up again. We always do SWOT, which is the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and the threats. Strengths, we talked about, you've got good ingress egress, you've got closest to the offices. We'd actually be a threat because Netflix would probably not continue to do business with Hotel Los Gatos. If you had a new higher-end product here, they'd probably lose some of their business. But overall, the whole city can use this in terms of number of rooms, because you're under-roomed right now. You really have an upscale community, so the type of product that you'd be looking for in this particular location, we assumed, after looking at everything and looking at the rates and what was available, that you'd probably be in the upper, or upper-scale product as opposed to Motel 6, Hilton Garden Inn. You'd be somewhere doing business in that $230 ADR number, which puts you into that scale. Weaknesses, right now, you don't have any amenities on the site at all, so there's nothing to attract the hotel today. So that has to be part of anything you guys decide to do, because without it, your hotel's not going to do very well. You need to have not only retail, but you also have to have additional restaurants like you have downtown here. You have great restaurants downtown, but not much up there. Your height limit will be, in our opinion, an issue, because if you are stuck with 45, you must have a larger envelope for the actual building, and the costs will go up as a result. You want to have six stories, seven stories, eight stories, somewhere in there. This comment here on the land price, hotels are real, real sensitive to the amount of land price per square foot, and how many rooms you can build based upon the cost of the land. It's a big variable, and something has to be worked out with the master developer here so that the hotel site itself can get the hotel built and use land, go vertical, and not pay so much. Otherwise, ROI is not going to be as good. Opportunities, we only listed three, but there's lots of opportunities in this particular site. The sky's kind of the limit for you guys on here. Threats, the cyclical market that we just talked about, that's a problem right away. You have to time when you are going to open, so when you start construction, length of time, et cetera, and there is a potential downturn. There always is in any real estate development. You have two hotels in Cameron Park would probably be directly competitive when they come in. That'll be an issue, and so the selection of the type of hotel that you put in here is going to be very critical. I'm going to stop for a second, get a little water. I apologize, I've had a cold for a week, and I can't shake it. But this will help. Ah, much better. Okay. The other competition that you have is the construction cost itself. San Jose, one of the highest construction price per room in California. Depending upon the type of hotel you put in, the amenities that the developer wants to add to the hotel, or the demands that a national franchise will make you put into the hotel, are going to be a real issue for what gets built here. And you have to build a hotel that will be successful in a short period of time. Every hotel, when it opens up, has a burn rate, if you will, of how long it's going to take to get to normality of occupancy and rate and making money. It could be anywhere from 18 to 36 months. With the San Jose construction costs of $350,000 to $450,000 per room, you're looking at 150-room property, about $40 to $60 million, depending upon what you put there. Big number. It's going to be hard to get people interested in it unless everything else goes along with it. Here's our conclusions and recommendations. Long list, I'll go down them quick. First one off the bat is we feel that a new hotel development could be accommodated here, and the hotel site within the North Forty Project enjoys advantages over the sites that the competitive hotels have. It's better. You have better ingress egress, you have better curb appeal. You've got the actual town of Los Gatos reputation. It is an upper-scale community. It does very well, it's very successful. It's a very strong market, and it would indicate that that, with that type of property that we talked about, would probably do well here. Again, on the threats and disadvantages we talked about, this is an issue, and you've got to get this duck in order at the same time you're doing this other, and that means you have to have both pieces together to make this hotel successful. A hotel out in the field by itself is not going to work. You don't really have a lot of tourists, so you're really going to do group business in this town, which means you're going to be going against Campbell and San Jose. You're going to have to have a type of product which will allow you to have meeting space, 5,000 to 7,000 square feet, which will also be banquet space, ballroom space, community use space, in order to make this thing successful. It's just not a tourist destination, if you will. Again, back to the 45 feet. You guys have to deal with that. Again, we talked about this, but the limited space that you have now with the amenities and entertainment that's not there, again, has to be incorporated, and it's really kind of it. Be happy to take any questions that the council might have.
Okay, it looks like we have Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a few questions. The first one is, I kind of drew a different conclusion when I read your report. You were saying that the percentage growth in hotel occupancy rooms is very small the last couple of years, and based on that, you were assuming we were, you know, hitting a plateau in the economic growth of our area, and that you would expect the next thing is us to go over the top and room utilization to drop. You had a lot of words in there about, you know, there is sort of a maximum percentage that realistically a hotel can hit, especially in an area like this where the weekends are less used, you know? So a lot of your percentages, what is it used during the week? You mentioned seasonality, there's probably some parts of the season that companies don't bring people in, so a lot of the hotel, I was, the picture I was getting is a lot of the hotel use is really business during the week, the weekends not used so much. really business during the week, the weekends not used so much. So, to me, it seemed like the growth was not because our economy's leveling off, but because there's no more accessibility during the week when the companies really need it.
There is a derf of meeting space in the city?
Mr. Diamond, can you use the microphone?
Oh, I thought I was. I'm sorry. There is a need for more meeting space, more classroom-style meeting space and more general meeting space for large groups to meet. With Silicon Valley's bulging growth, they have to have plenty of meeting space, and right now, the whole area is really kind of under the percentage it would really need. It's a fine line, because if you build too much and you have a downturn, all of a sudden you have a lot of vacancy.
So, if I could follow up. When you're saying there's a need for meeting space, how does that translate into what was up here, which was room occupancy? Because you're not including meeting space occupancy in your room occupancy percentage.
Correct.
So, that would say people might come and stay there so they can meet for a conference during the weekend? Is that what you're getting at?
Well, the object would be to have a group meeting that is using rooms as well, not just day meetings. So, you want to have people coming in, say Netflix is bringing in their people from another state or another locale. They would put them up at the hotel as well as meet there. It's typical that group hotels sell not only meeting space, but room blocks.
Okay. If I'll ask him, okay?
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also have a few questions. First of all, thank you for the report, both verbally and in writing. I learned from that. I'm trying to put my, trying to make things real for myself. One of the words you used is, you have different kinds, categories of hotel, luxury hotel, et cetera. What category of hotel is Hotel Los Gatos over here on Main Street?
Mid to upper.
Mid to upper?
Scale.
Okay. So, it, on your chart?
And then, the reason why it's mid is because of its age. It's reaching obsolescence in some of its areas.
Okay.
It's a beautiful facility, but it's got age on it.
Excuse me? Hold on. Just a reminder, if, when we hear people in the audience, we aren't able to hear our speakers, so if we can just keep our comments to when you are going to be speaking?
What is your assumption on the age? I want to make sure you and I are on the same page.
I don't know the exact age. I just knew it from a physical look at the property and walk-through that it had been older. It's gone through a management change recently. It's possible they have plans to upgrade. The rooms themselves are-
Mr. Diamond, I could see people craning to hear you, so if you could just, you don't necessarily need to turn that way, but speak in the microphone.
I apologize. How's that? Is that better? It sounds, to me, with my ears plugged up, it sounds like I'm really loud. The rooms themselves are very nicely appointed, but at the same time, they are not as modern as, say, the AC Hotel in downtown San Jose is. It's different. It's different. And the customers are changing in this world. We have more millennia now coming into the job market than we've had. We've had more baby boomers who are going, exiting the market. And the baby boomers' ideas of what a room should look like are different from what a millennium person would go for. And they want the tech side, and that's what's lacking here.
And when you say mid to upper, is, I don't recall that as being a category in your report?
In the, in this, back of the report, we put in the Smith Travel Research chain scales, in which they give you a list of luxury chains, upper, upscale, upscale, medium, all the way down. And it gives you a whole list of hotels that they consider in that category. It's just informational only. It's not really saying that your hotel would fall into this particular category, but it gives you an idea of, okay, if you're going to go after a hotel to put on this particular site, what works and what doesn't work. And obviously, we talked about the Motel 6 not being one that you would say, oh, let's do that, because it's really going to benefit the town. You really want to have something that the town can be proud of and use and want to use.
All right. You also, in your recommendation, talked about a hotel with a gross square footage of 100,000 to 160,000 square feet, 150 to 200 rooms. You also, and then you also mentioned meeting rooms of 3,500 to 7,000 feet, square feet. Are those meeting rooms of 3,500 to 7,000 square feet an additur to the 100,000 to 160,000 for the hotel? Or are they included within it?
They'd be included.
Okay. All right.
But that assumes that you're going to be more vertical. If you have to have those rooms outside of it, you're going to have a larger envelope for the construction. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And you had been talking about the envelope and the cost of the land per acre and the cost of development, which you did give us. Is there an anticipated, by hotel developer, is there an anticipated amount that is expected to be paid for the land per acre or that is anticipated for the ROI?
Not necessarily. It depends on how each individual developer's going to do it. Everybody's going to do their own potential ROI, built their costs, what it's going to cost, what type of franchise they're going to have, what the costs are associated, but the levels are going to be inside the hotel. This is very preliminary. And so, that the number of rooms is going to be dictated by how high you can go and how much money you can raise. Because we said $300,000 to $400,000 per room. If you go from 150,000 to 200,000, at $300,000, you're $60 million for that hotel.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. I had some questions regarding the amenities that you said were necessary for a hotel to succeed, that it would have to be surrounded by something. It couldn't be in an empty field. All right. So, I have a couple of questions on that. My first is, you put up a chart and you were indicating where you would draw users, and you put Netflix, styling, Roku, et cetera. So, I'm wondering, do you think, what's your opinion on whether or not it's important to have any kind of office space as an adjunct amenity to the hotel itself? So, for example, an incubator, an R&amp;D space, whatever that may be, do you have any opinion with respect to how that works with a potential hotel?
It's not whether or not it works. It does. But it's how much. So, it's really a quantitative issue, not should you or shouldn't you. You want to have office space, if you can, if it works, for the development.
Give me a ballpark for-
I can't do that.
Okay.
I can't do that.
And with respect to amenities, you mentioned some retail restaurants. I'm assuming that a hotel that you're talking about would have its own restaurant?
Yes.
And what other types of amenities do you think it would be important to have, given your market knowledge, to make a hotel successful?
What you want to avoid, in terms of that particular location, is doing a Walmart, mini-mart. You want to do an upscale boutique style, very similar to your downtown that you have now, just extend it out, if really. You want to have places where we'll draw not only the local population, but other people who come down and find that location and want to stay there. The worst thing you can do is to have a hotel that has nothing outside of it, and there's nowhere to go, and there's no place other to eat except at the hotel. If you're in the hotel at a meeting for two, three, four days, you have breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and second day, okay, now where are we going to go? And you're going to have to, if you don't have it there, you're going to be putting these people on buses. If you put them on buses, they're going to go somewhere else. And the next time they book the meeting, they might not even book it with you. They might book it somewhere else because of that location's amenities. So, you want to have the community that you have to keep them.
Any further questions? Vice Mayor, you had a couple, and then before we went to Councilmember Spector?
Okay. Yeah, I think some of them have been covered. So, you said you're putting them on buses. I'm thinking, what if we run a shuttle to our downtown? So, rather than, I mean, we worry a lot about competing with our downtown, so we don't really want to build another downtown out there in order to make the hotel successful. What if we had a shuttle that ran to downtown frequently? So, then they're going to downtown, not somewhere else.
Well, that's an amenity you currently don't have that you'd be adding. So, you have to add amenities. So, that's one consideration.
So, a shuttle to our downtown is amenity?
It's possible, yeah. Again, very early in the stage, and you have to talk about, okay, what are we going to put there? Who's going to do it? And what are we going to offer the people that are coming in to stay there at the hotel? And a shuttle downtown, it's three minutes. You could, you know, you can, you can walk it if you want for 15 minutes. So, a shuttle downtown is not bad at all. A shuttle actually gets rid of a lot of the people getting in their cars and trying to go downtown to eat and parking in your downtown, which I would say is difficult tonight. I was trying to find a place to park. If it's like that all the time, you've got a real issue.
Second question. So, what I think I'm hearing is the 45-foot height limit is a killer. What, you know?
I didn't say that. It's a restrictor. I think you ought to think about it that way. If you have, if 45 feet is what you really want to have, that means that your hotel building envelope, instead of being 160,000-square-foot pad, it's going to be two acres.
So, you know-
To get everything in that you need.
So, another part of the equation, you know, in your SWOT analysis on the weekend, weakness is, you talk about the land price for the hotel. It lags, meaning, you know, you, any land the hotel takes up, it's not the best use for that land. Somebody would rather build houses or build office or build anything else is kind of the picture I got. So, if a, you, when I think through it, I'm thinking, okay, if I really want a hotel there, if I have a developer that owns a lot of land, they'd prefer to have, okay, if we really want to ask them, please, please, put a hotel, they're then going to want to put something else to kind of subsidize the hotel effectively that has a higher land use value to it. Is that a reasonable assumption?
I think that's a reasonable statement. Highest and best use isn't always a hotel. Highest and best use could be an office building there, or it could be a mall. You already have residential set up to do that. So, you're going to have to have something that's compatible with that. It is an issue for hotel developers to keep their costs down. Remember that a hotel starts at zero every day, zero occupancy every day, whereas an office building, if you fill it up and you get to 95% occupied, it's 95% occupied every day until the lease is up. Not true in hotels.
So, one last question. Are there any kind of amenities a hotel could have that would help it make money from residents that live nearby? You know, either ones that are already living near this location, or if we encourage, well, a whole bunch more are going to be built just to the south, right? Is there, is there a model where hotels have some reason for those people to come over? Well, they would use their restaurant probably, but are there other, any other models to help support it just by housing being nearby?
There aren't. There aren't really. It's a struggle for hotels to get the locals, if I may use that term, to use the hotel and to benefit by it. And hotels try to go out of their way. They do sunset dinners. They do weekends. They do Valentine's Day, New Year's Eve, those types of things that are really aimed at the local people to come and stay, and they reduce their room rates, so they'll stay at the hotel for that night and breakfast the next morning and brunches. All of those are worked into a marketing plan for a hotel. The higher the hotel is, in terms of our upper, upscale that we talked about, the more likely it's going to have patronization by the locals. When you have a nice, high-end hotel, they have somebody coming in from out of town, let's go to the hotel and have a drink, because it's got a beautiful veranda, and you can sit out there, and we can have a glass of champagne, watch the sunset, have dinner. You want to have that. You don't want to have a hotel that is cold and sterile and turns off the local population. That's, at this point in time where you are, it's really going to depend on who's developing the hotel and what ideas they have for marketing the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Spector, and then Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You made a statement that the, you wouldn't want the hotel out in the middle of a farm, an orchard. And that's understandable. That needs amenities. That makes sense. But we do have an approval of the, what I call the South 20 portion of that property. Were you able to look at the kinds of things that are anticipated for that, those 20 acres, and determine whether or not it includes amenities that the hotel would like?
All I saw from the, the first 20 acres was residential. Is there, and I talked about a buffer zone, if you will, but I had not heard the specific plans.
Okay. I know you were looking to staff for the answer, so I'll just tell you that. It isn't just residential. It does have commercial.
Okay.
But, but you haven't looked at it, so you wouldn't be able to assess its attraction to a hotel.
Generally speaking, if you have commercial of the right kind, so you're not having a tobacco store in a strip mall, that kind of thing, if you have a regular, what you would consider a nice stores or a nice group of stores, it's going to help the hotel.
All right. We have no tobacco and whatever else you said. We should be okay.
Well, I was trying to be graphic about it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
I want to go out at the amenities a little bit different way.
Sure.
As someone with a lot of experience, at least with people I know very well, and having done it myself with business travel and a certain type of hotel, I think of what I think are a necessary amenity within walking distance of the hotel, which is not 15 minutes. It's like, if I get up 5:30 in the morning and I want to go to a meeting, I don't want to get on a bus and go downtown. So, I, we want coffee shop, a, some kind of little convenience, some market of some kind, a gym, a restaurant, or two. What else, what do you think are absolute musts as an amenity for a hotel to be successful?
Well, quite frankly, those are amenities in just about every hotel you go into these days. They're going to have a coffee bar.
Well, there's lots of them that have coffee places, you know, within a half a block, or they have a relationship with a really nice gym, not the room that's carpeted, you know, on the second floor.
The upper-scale hotels will have all those things, and they'll have them built in already. It won't be a little table over here with a couple of cups of coffee. It'll be something that you can enjoy. It'll be an amenity of the hotel. And they will have a gym, most likely. It'll probably be a full-service gym. I don't know whether or not they'll have a pool. That'll be dependent upon a whole bunch of factors. But they certainly will have exercise machines and those types of paraphernalia. They'll be there.
Right. So, there's exercise machines that are in a room on the second floor, and then there's like a real-life gym. But in, leaving that aside-
Correct.
If you included all those amenities that you've just described, in keeping with your observation about, well, if I have 7,000 square feet of meeting space and I don't get a height exception, that's going to spread out the footprint. If I put all of those amenities that you've just listed into the hotel itself and I don't add height, how big is my hotel going to end up being?
It's a very difficult question, because there's no concept to look at. So, you're asking me to say, okay, in 35 years that I've been doing this, what would you say? And two to four acres would give you a lovely spread, keep properly even some of your, are they peach trees in the site? Are those peach walnut trees? Some of those. You could have running trails, jogging trails, those kinds of things, exercise, sort of the things that go around the Oracle facility up north. Those things are available, but you need some acreage to do that. You don't want to use too much acreage for just the hotel, because it's very expensive land. And the more amenities you put in for the guests- And the more amenities you put in for the guests that are spread out, the less you have for office space and retail space and other things that will generate sales tax and benefits to the city. So it's difficult. But that's really what you're looking to do. And some hotels have just one little room, some hotels have 10,000 square feet of spa.
Mr. Diamond, something different. In terms of the upper, in your analysis, the type of hotel type, we have Good Samaritan right next door. And that's probably closer to walk in 15 minutes rather than downtown. And there've been different prototypes discussed and some is this longer-term residential type of hotel for families of patients at Good Sam. Are there such hotels and is that something that you even considered when looking at that site?
We did. Certainly Residence Inn's, Ronald McDonald House, hotels that are set up next to hospitals that have a rate for people that can't afford it to be able to stay with their family. Those are all things that you can do and you could do for this site. Again, it comes back to the same issue of the cost of the land is high. And if you have nobody benefiting you for the money that you're going to lose by selling that room instead of for $200, which we showed over there, selling it for $65 to a family in need, I don't mind doing that, I think that's a good idea. But you can't do the whole hotel that way or you won't make any money. It would be in the best interest of the hotel management company to offer deals to that hospital to say, we will give you X number of rooms. And they're available to you and they're available as like a distressed traveler rate. And fill that up.
Okay. And then the last question I have for you, when talking about the amenities surrounding a hotel, and let's just use this upper, upscale category that you've put. What, in your opinion, is the critical massive square footage of amenities that you need around there? Is there such an algorithm, a model?
No.
Or is it just a, no, okay?
No. Hotel industry has lots and lots of rules of thumb, but not really for that.
Okay.
And it's really going to be, because what you have is you have hotel developers and management companies and franchise companies that all have their own idea of what their room should look like, what their service level should be, and what customers they want to go after. And that is really what's going to drive these amenities that you want. And you're, however far away from that to figure that out, that's when you're going to get it.
And actually, I actually have one more last question.
Sure.
You mentioned the shuttle. And with these types of hotels, I would assume if I were staying at an upper, upscale hotel, there would be automatically a shuttle. Is that not a good assumption?
It is a good assumption.
Okay.
It was Rob's idea, but the shuttle.
Right, but I was just kind of...
He gets the credit, not me. But most hotels have an airport shuttle.
Well, airport shuttle or destination.
And a shuttle to downtown. The Hays, which I am involved in, has two shuttles that run downtown. The groups can book them, limousines, buses, whatever they need. You're going to accommodate your guests. You're going to find out when you have somebody booking for a group, what that group needs. Not only what they need in this type of thing, but what they need in the size of the room and what they need in terms of amenities for their people. Is it a team building? Is it all serious and everybody to bed at 7 o'clock because we're going to get up at 3 o'clock and study all day? Or is it going to be one of these things where we're going to have a normal meeting and then we're going to have a dinner, we're going to have cocktails, and we're going to go somewhere. And we're going to be here three to four days, we want to have seafood one night, steak one night, et cetera.
Okay, more questions. Councilmember Johnson?
Just one last one. If somebody were going to come in and develop a hotel, in your opinion, would they have to know that the amenities are going to be in place at the same time? So would I develop a hotel on a field hoping that something was going to come? Or would I not develop until I knew that that was going to be there?
That's really a question for the developer, not for us. But people have built hotels that are future locations. They build them because they know that such and such is going to happen in the future. And they can get the land cheaper, they can get the construction done, and they can open up. And they may have several lean years. And they may have either the working capital set aside to keep their losses down, or they may have some sort of an incentive from the cities or the counties or the state to do that. Everybody wants the perfect world as to when they open their hotel. And everybody knows there's no such thing. So somewhere in between those two vast stretches is where you're going to end up. And it's really going to be in the mind and the hearts of the developer to determine when he's ready to take the step or not. And how long has this North Forty been going on? 20 years? Forever.
Actually, Mr. Diamond, if you could just direct questions towards us.
Sorry.
Thank you. Questions, council? Okay, well, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
I hope it was a help.
Yes, it was, thank you. And council, before I open to public hearing, do you have further questions of staff? Yes, Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me look at my notes here. I had several questions of staff. If the council, if the specific plan is amended to include residential units, forget the, any number, some number, could that number be increased by a density bonus and can that be modified by concessions?
Yes.
So any amount we put on there could have the density bonus and concession?
That's correct.
All right. We received testimony last time that we had this hearing about concerns of being near the freeway and wanting to be, I think it was 500 feet from the freeway. What is staff's input on that?
So the environmental impact report analyzed that. And I believe it was any time after 2015 because there were new emission rules that were adopted. The outdoor spaces for the residential units needed to be 50 feet away. Staff doesn't think there's any basis for 500 feet, but that's definitely up for discussion for the council. I can pull out soon, kind of the depth from the property line at 17 and the property line at Los Gatos Boulevard to give you an idea of what that is. But in certain cases, that's over half of the depth of the site.
Okay. We also heard at our last hearing on the specific plan, concerned about the protection of existing homes on the north part of the North Forty. What is staff's input on that?
So given the timing and the law is currently drafted, we will be requiring the developer to do that analysis and then staff will review it. And I'm not sure if Mr. Schultz has any additional information on that.
And let's assume that this analysis is done. What is the conclusion? That the houses can be removed or the houses shall stay there? What are you going with that?
It's a replacement requirement. And so it's based on, and I'm not sure, I think they were looking at tightening the language to define what that was, but that did come up in the first phase. And so we would be analyzing that to make sure that that law was complied with.
All right, and the last question, Madam Mayor. There was discussion in the staff report, and it is an issue that I have considered, about limiting the square footage of any additional homes. What is, can that be mandated? Can we mandate the square footage? And if that is done, could it then be modified by some kind of concession or state law, of which I may not be aware?
I think the short answer is yes. So that could ultimately be modified, even though it is an objective standard, given the concession language, either through, probably through state density bonus law, someone could request that.
So if I, if this council said you can have X number of homes, but they can only have X number of bedrooms, X number of square footage, the state law could allow the developer to modify that?
That request could be made.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I'm going to follow that. And I know it's a hypothetical, so this may be something we have to study further. But if by asking for a concession, the concession is for the square footage? I mean, is there such a thing as a maximum or a minimum or maximum square footage that was in the housing package? Or was it a reduction in units?
No, so the square footage question is different than the net loss or some of the other reduced density provisions in the new housing laws. The square footage could fall under, from the existing state density bonus law, they're allowed to have concessions granted to them if they do request that and meet those requirements. And that can be a concession of any requirement of a specific plan, a zoning code. And so those are not really modified by the new state laws. Those are handling different issues. It's really the state density bonus law that handles that.
And the state density bonus law did not get touched in this last package, correct?
No.
So those would remain in addition to the 15 new housing bills?
Correct.
Oh, okay, thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
So I just want to make sure I understand, beating a dead horse. With respect to the density bonus, by law, the developer is entitled to particular concessions, a certain number, if they need or request that based upon some showing that they are not able to build project, it's not feasible, whatever it may be. And so those concessions could be anything from a discount on my fees, a height, a grading, a square footage, a bedroom count. And Mr. Schultz, I'm curious whether it's legal to do a bedroom count. But, so anything that we determined we may want to impose could be subject to a concession, correct?
Generally, yes.
Okay, thank you. And is it legal to limit bedrooms?
I'm not sure on that.
Okay.
But at least everything else you said about asking for those concessions regarding heights, setbacks, grading, that's all something that a developer can ask for if he's requesting a density bonus.
Any further questions of staff? Okay. Okay, so I am going to open up the public hearing. Do I have any speaker cards? Would anyone like to speak? So you can go ahead and hand it to Ms. Lombardo and just identify us for the record. And be prepared, since you're the only speaker, you may get all the questions.
Jeez, I should do this quickly. I've been practicing to keep this under three minutes. Editing and editing, all right? Oh, no. Hi, I'm Jan Olson. I live on Lester Lane, right behind the Office Depot and across the street from the North Forty. I've been involved with and have followed this project for the past 23 years. One of the basic tenets driving this specific plan is supposed to be that it addresses the needs of the local neighbors. I know that we have not been asked what we would like. So I threw it out there on nextdoor.com and these are the responses I got. It was said over and over in how we would love affordable, family-friendly restaurants that we could walk to and then be able to safely walk home. That was the number one request. Quotes, "good food," not the same restaurants as in downtown Los Gatos, Campbell and Willow Glen, something unique. "A craft coffee shop, somewhere to read, study, socialize work." There were several requests for a movie theater. Someone said, "A movie theater would be amazingly nice. I like stuff to do rather than things to buy." A bookstore was also high on the list. The remarks included, "A used bookstore would be fun," and I second that an independent bookstore would be great, especially after losing Village Books downtown. There was a comment that incorporated all three desires. I agree with the bookstore and movie theater. I would love to see some unique restaurants that aren't uber-expensive and are possibly friendly, family-friendly. A request for a community meeting space was also mentioned. What about community rooms for groups to use? A destination was asked for. We would love somewhere to walk to with the family and the dog and just people watch and hang out. The North Twenty will not compete with downtown as we are closer to Campbell and San Jose, so that's where we go to spend our dollars. We would love to keep our money in Los Gatos if it is more convenient. New shops and restaurants that are affordable will also bring in revenue and life back into our town. We're losing a great deal of business revenue to our neighboring towns who are welcoming in affordable shops and restaurants that maintain repeat and loyal customers. We know you want a hotel in FAs and the thoughts on that were, maybe a big hotel, they can allow smaller shops, bookstore, food, coffee shop, on the premises, which is what the consensus of the people here want. This is a big space that's being developed. Boutique restaurants, bookstores will follow only if the plan is good. And we should cut back the commercial retail to a maximum of 300,000 square feet, and that's for the 200,000-square-foot hotel and a maximum of 100,000 square feet for retail and office. Though I guess that's a little bit smaller than what they, bigger than what they're generally saying. I believe the surrounding neighborhood should be pulled to see what we would like in the North Twenty before you finalize the amendments to the specific plan. We are the most affected and the least heard. Thank you for listening now. 10 seconds, cool.
So, thank you. And I know that you did forward that to us, so thank you for...
I edited it way down.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So maybe this is a difficult question because I know you were giving us everybody else's ideas, but the first 20 acres proposal, well, I guess it's a real project now, has 66,000 square feet of commercial in it. There is, my understanding, a plan for three restaurants. Do you, you know, do we need more commercial than what's already going in?
Well, we don't know what those restaurants are. They're just restaurants. Hopefully, they're family restaurants, because that's what we really don't, we have nothing on our side of town. That would be great. And then the other spots wouldn't. It all depends what's going in. I don't know what that Market Hall's gonna, they don't know what it's going to be. You know, oh, yeah, maybe we'll have some things that are grown from our orchard. I mean, it's all so vague. It's just space and it's, okay, here's where it's going to be and this is how much square footage. But there was nothing saying what's really going to go in there. These, and if these things can be incorporated into what's already, that's great, because we would love anything. We don't have anything on our side of town. We really don't.
So if I could, one more question. So as the town, since we don't own the property, it's difficult for us to say there must be a bookstore, for example.
No, I know.
But we could strongly encourage the developer to have study sessions, community meeting study sessions. Would that be a good way to go to try to influence the developer?
That would be wonderful. And I really think that you need to get hold of the neighbors. And I, my view is doing a direct mailing. Everybody gets their mail. Everybody, you know, they see a postcard and it's put to them. You know, they may not see it in the newspaper, they may not see it if it's more vague or what's new in Los Gatos. I think if they really try to come to us, and I'll do my part to rally everybody, because that's kind of what I do.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm curious your thoughts on, based on what you heard and/or read from our hotel expert. I mean, there's, a lot of what you shared with us could be built into those amenities that he shared, but as we've also learned from our experience with Phase One, how do you write a plan? You can't dictate...
No, I know.
Affordable, friendly, and good. My idea of good is different from my son's, so...
Right.
So based, because I know you've been with us throughout this, what are some of your thoughts as we move to the next phase?
I know you can't specify, hey, this is what we want. I know you've got it by square footage and you've got it by how you're zoning it and whatever. You know, here's hoping that the developer hears what the people want and tries to incorporate that. I know we can't tie their hands either, but it would be nice and I'm putting it out there. And as far as what I heard tonight, you know, it sounds like everything is going to be, you know, he would like things to be really upscale. And from, I'm hearing, affordable, affordable, affordable. And so an upscale, another upscale restaurant is not what our neighborhood would go to. We might go to, but it's not what we want.
And then I heard you talk about being able to comment on or have a neighborhood meeting. So it is your request, is there, tell me, I don't want to put words in your mouth, to have something of that sort before something's finalized so that you can get your neighborhood out to comment on?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any further questions? Yes, Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you for being here. I'm, just bear with me, I'm a little curious, because we have a specific plan, and it says X amount of retail, X amount of restaurant, you can do this, you can do that. And as you've conceded, we can't tell the developer, I want a bookstore, I want a specific kind of restaurant. Everything that you've mentioned is allowed under the current specific plan. So what amendment do you think is required to get to where you want to get?
Not sure about that, other than if, you know, the breakdown, because I know you've been looking at the square footage, you know, the different, you know, maybe it's more just putting it out there, that this is what we would like, and just getting it out there.
And let me follow that. This is what would, we would like, meaning the, I'm going to use your prop, this specific plan? Or is it, in your opinion, something visual of perhaps the various models, the hotel broker, where you lay out different options and prototypes? I'm trying to get at, what can, in your opinion, based on your neighbors, what will get them to comment on the plan? The actual plan, or a visual drawing, or a community meeting?
I think a community meeting. If they were gonna see, read the plan, they would have read the plan. I don't know that they have, to be really honest with you. As I was encouraging people to come to the meeting, I said, "Don't wait for the orange story poles to go up, because then it's too late." You know, this, these are the things we want. I know you can't put it in that, hey, we want this kind of restaurant, we want, you know, I know you have the square footages, as I said, and you're encouraging so much of this kind of square footage for this, and this for this. I think a community meeting would really be nice. Would really be nice.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mrs. Olson, thank you. I can tell from what your questions and from what you've been saying, that you seem to get it. And when I say get it, get that the town has some authority, i.e., you can have office, you can have retail, you can have this. But we don't decide whether it's gonna be a bookstore, or that. So given your understanding of what we can and cannot do, what realistically would you like us to do vis-à-vis your vision? Realistically, I've got all these, well, hey, if we could, you know, um, I guess, other than ask, you know, to meet with the town people, and kind of look at how you're looking at the whole thing with the hotel, and whether it's gonna be upscale, and the, any amenities, and the footage, and if we're gonna have more homes, and what other kind of items we're gonna have there and allow there. You know, maybe we, you know, hopefully, the developer, whoever ends up developing it, will hear what we, we want, and incorporate that into the whole plan. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Olson, and thanks for putting it out on Nextdoor and braving the responses for us. Chris Chapman?
Hello, my name's Chris Chapman. I live at 201 Mistletoe Road. I'd simply like to read a letter to the editor that was in the San Jose Mercury News about a week ago, because it addresses a lot of these concerns. It's in the Mercury News every day. Traffic jams, housing shortages, overcrowded schools, a frail water system, a failed or nonexistent public transportation system, an environment in decline, crime, absurd commutes, stretched public services, and abusive driving. All are the results of overcrowding. Our leaders have failed us as they focus on business growth with no interest in the resulting consequences. A prime example is Google and Mountain View, soon to be followed by Apple and Cupertino, proposed San Jose build-outs. We are saturated. It is time to place a five-year moratorium on all-new commercial building. If our leaders can't resolve existing basic issues within that period, then extend the moratorium for another five years. Expansion without dealing and resolving basic problems that already exist smacks of sheer incompetence with our leadership at the city, county, and state level. My comment is, until this county resolves the intersection of 85 and 17, then why are we, as a town council, approving more building on top of the north, the South Twenty, I guess we call it, for the congestion? We, we aren't a cohesive government anymore. We, we have our own little plot of what we're going to do, but less than 100 yards from where this hotel might go, or whatever it is, is one of the most massive traffic jams and congestion. I'm actually surprised that, that, well, they're saying it's something other than residential, and that's probably very good, because people are gonna get more and more in tune with, well, what about the particulates from the freeway and, and other issues? But, but specifically, I don't know why we're doing anything until we address traffic issues. And, thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Lee Quintana?
Lee Quintana, Five Palm Avenue. Oops. Well, since I pulled it out, I'll keep it out. I would like to second that, what Ms. Olson said, that the residents in the nearby areas have not been given, or haven't taken the opportunity to participate both in what they would like to see in that area. I think that, given the location of the North Forty, we're not really just talking about Los Gatos residents, we're talking about the neighborhoods surrounding that area, which includes both Campbell and San Jose and Los Gatos. But my, and I, and I'd like to say that I think that was one of the lessons that we should learn from this whole process, is that not enough of the stakeholders were included in the planning process to begin with. Having said that, any amendments that you choose to make, I would request that you're careful that it maintains the integrity of the entire plan, and we don't wind up having a North Twenty on the North Forty and a North Forty on the North Forty, but that we still have a North Forty that's an integrated concept. I would like to ask that, in one of the amendments that you make to text, is to clarify that lower intensity residential does not mean lower-density residential? And that in Chapter One, you provide at close to the beginning, the overall concept of how the North Forty land use intensity changes from the south end to the north end, and how the reverse happens with the number of dwelling units. I'd like to ask that you add a section in the first chapter about the relationship of the North Forty to the housing element in the state and federal housing laws. Generally, on office, I would be favorable, if it doesn't interfere with other objectives, to lower the office rate, to emphasize neighborhood-serving services, that would also benefit a hotel if we should have one. That we don't change the open space provisions, because they're the best that we've had in any development in town. That we provide retail for local serving uses, and that we increase the residential. And I'm gonna add this, I don't know if I have time to. It's my understanding that as far as affordable housing goes, it's not a question of the size, it's a question of the number of bedrooms that are proposed, and I don't think you can limit the number of bedrooms.
Ms. Quintana, you have some questions? Vice Mayor?
So the question I think we keep trying to ask different people is, how much additional retail do we really want? I think you just said more, more retail, right?
No, I didn't, excuse me. I did not mean more retail square footage. I meant neighborhood-serving retail. That would be the emphasis in the retail.
So again, the question I asked before was, you know, we already got 66,000, is that enough? Do we want 100,000 more?
I can't answer that question, because I don't know the sizes and the types of uses and comparison. I don't think we want Walmarts or that type of use. But I do think we want uses that are not just high-end. I think we want to serve our local residents as well. And, and I second that thought on restaurants as well. I rarely go out to dinner in this town, because all the restaurants are too expensive.
Councilmember Johnson?
Sorry, but I can't resist. I know that you have a lot of experience in doing planning, and this is, of course, is a concept, not a development. So as I listened to Ms. Olson, the suggestions are basically what I get with a development proposal, that then they could comment on, not a specific plan. So I hear you say, for example, "I would like affordable restaurants, and I would like neighborhood-serving." Those are subjective.
You're correct.
And if I want to put objective criteria in to invite that kind of thing, how would I, how would I go about changing the plan to even begin to define that?
You know, I'm not sure you actually can in that respect. You can just hope that you have statements in the plan that guide the developers to get there. But I think you can put caps on the amount of square footage devoted to, say, restaurants, to a spa. Do we want another courtside there, or do we just want a smaller spa? Those kind of things. I think you can put controls on them, just like you've put controls on the amount of square footage for different types of residential types. And in fact, the, this is in the same vein, it goes to housing rather than to commercial, but it, it's still your same question. Currently, the Phase One approval, while it used up most of the residential, it did not use up most of, or near most of, the maximum amount of square footage for, for that residential. And in fact, based on the existing number of units that are allowed, the remaining square footage for the 44 units that might be built under that limit would, could be up to 6,000 square feet apiece. I don't think that's what the town wants. And so I would ask that you look at realistically revising those numbers in, in Chapter Two to reflect the remaining development potential for residential. And I would also, this is my last add-on.
It's not really my question anymore.
I would also suggest that you relook at the table in the glossary, because that table, to me, is misleading. It's not a standard, it's a concept, and it's a concept that only provides the lower end of the ranges that would be possible, and doesn't give you an idea if, if you were doing the higher end of the square footages, what those would be. And lastly, if you really want to control the numbers of units and the sizes, you need to be more specific about the numbers.
Thank you. You answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further for Ms. Quintana?
Thank you.
Thank you. Grant Sedgwick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council. Grant Sedgwick, I live at-
Mr. Sedgwick, do you mind raising the microphone?
Not at all.
Thank you.
I live at 190 Questa de Los Gatos Way. I really am gonna confine my comments to the hotel study that was presented, because I have some expertise in that area. I don't really have another axe to grind here at all. And I have mostly supportive things to say about this report. Because the hotel itself wasn't defined, some of Mr. Diamond's comments and conclusions were a little vague, because he doesn't know what kind of hotel is actually being proposed. But, and, and maybe in that point, I would say that his selection of the competitive properties would be a lot better refined if the hotel itself was defined, okay? Just by way of example, I tried to make a reservation just for fun at the Toll House next Tuesday, and at the Hotel Los Gatos next Tuesday, and the difference in rate is extraordinary. So they're not competitive properties. And similarly, the Valencia, as he commented at Santana Row, is not competitive with a select-service hotel, for example, that was in the collection as well. So the point, he's handicapped only because he doesn't know what kind of hotel is proposed. This could be better refined. I think there's a market opportunity, I think he demonstrated that. I would think that, from point of view of community benefit and community advantage, the kind of hotel that would be best would be in the category that he described, which in this chain scale it's attached, would be in the upper upscale category. An upper upscale hotel has the range of amenities that are, in fact, as beneficial as a, as a hotel can be to local residents. I mean, it has, it will have restaurants, it will have meeting spaces, it may have fitness and other kinds of facilities that are available to the public. You might go to the Hotel Los Gatos for any kind of family celebration, but you don't go to a limited service or a select-service hotel for Valentine's Dinner or a family party. So to the extent that a hotel belongs on this site at all, and I think it's feasible, that's another, the other question is, of course, one of entitlements, and whether a sponsor wants to build a hotel there, but a hotel is feasible there. I would agree with almost all the technical things that he said about the hotel. Watch my timing. It will probably consume about three acres, he put a range of two to four. I would say the right size is about 175 rooms. Again, it's not my decision, it's what will attract the right kind of branding and management, and capital. And then finally, his range of size in seven to 800 square feet gross floor area per room is about exactly right, if you're going to have full service of, of amenities and facilities. So the report is reliable, I think, in my opinion. And I have some experience.
So just a quick question. So, because you are a local, so you understand Hotel Los Gatos. He, he put, I'm paraphrasing, but he said, "The millennial worker here for town business is not necessarily looking for a Hotel Los Gatos, but looking for," I forgot what he said, "something more techie." Would you agree with that statement?
I would, but that's not, the millennials don't make up the whole market. You know, the market has got segments to it. Lots of people can't afford to stay in the Hotel Los Gatos. It has a classic design, I think inspired probably by Mediterranean architecture and finishes and furnishings. That isn't everybody's cup of tea, but I wouldn't call it a mid-scale hotel at all. He made a mistake on that, I think.
Okay.
I also think, if I may say, that the 66,000 feet of retail and restaurants, I think, if I've got this right, that has been approved in the first phase, or I guess what you're calling the south part of the North Forty-
First phase is sufficient.
-is probably rich enough in its potential to have the amenities that he's described as important to make a hotel location, a good location. So, you know, I, I don't know that there will be a missing piece here, but that's just a comment.
Actually, before I call, go to anyone, I want to follow that. So then if you, it's, there's 20, 20 to 22 acres remaining. If you take two to four acres just for the hotel, and if, let's say, the 66,000's sufficient, what do we do with the remaining 20 acres?
Seniors housing. Anybody who knows me would know I'm gonna say that.
Okay.
That's an pressing need in Los Gatos, but not necessarily subsidized housing, and not necessarily targeted at, at the, those who can least afford that kind of accommodation. You know, it's an aging town, an aging population, and people want to stay here when they get to retirement age.
Okay, so my last question now, prompted by that, and then I'll turn to others. What kind of hotel can you put then, if it's surrounded by senior housing?
Full service, and seniors will be there, it's best patrons. They'll go out for cocktails, they'll go out for dinner, they'll swim in the swimming pool, they'll exercise in the gym. They're very compatible uses together, in my opinion.
Okay. Other council members? Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Johnson?
I really just wanted to start, steal Marcia's question, so she can ask something else, but-
I think it's something else.
What, what should we change in the specific plan to help this hotel happen?
I apologize, I don't know. I don't know what the, what the form is that we're working with.
Well, so we limited it at 45 feet, that was certainly something that we talked about.
I'm not hung up about 45 feet. Great luxury hotels are built in 45 feet. It'll take a little more land, as Mr. Diamond properly assessed. But I think that within that height limit, and within the scale that I suggest- But I think that within that height limit and within the scale that I suggested and that he suggested, approximately one-hundred-and-seventy-five guest rooms, it will take three acres to build a hotel like that and make it properly sited and appropriately -- appropriate amount of open space. The parking has to be in a structure, probably a level below grade or in some combination of other parking structure. You wouldn't squander this land on surface parking for a hotel, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Mr. Rooney, I was going to make the height question, so you did it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, Mr. Sedgwick, I do know that you have discussed senior housing. If we assume that the town cannot mandate a certain age group in residences, how would we get a legal facility for seniors? Are you looking at something like the Hyatt that is in, what, Palo Alto?
That's two questions. I think there is a great demand for what's called a continuing care retirement community, but not the only type of seniors' housing that might be suitable and financeable. As for the legal tools that you have available, there are better expertise in the room than mine, but I don't know how you do that. But the -- this is a wave that's with us. We all understand this. And two people who I'm now one of those empty nesters, my wife and I live without our kids. They're away at college and so on. People live in a lot bigger homes in Los Gatos than mine, by the way. They don't need the space and they don't need the care that it takes, and they want to stay in town. I think there's a great opportunity here, and I have for several years thought that there's a great opportunity to do a good quality seniors' housing development.
And when you say seniors, you're talking about a continuing care facility?
I like the continuing care model, yes, and that Palo Alto community that I think you've seen. I'm pretty sure you have, that we proposed at another site at another time. Would be a good model, and -- but there are others. There are others.
Any further questions?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for letting me speak.
Jane Sonnenschein?
Good evening. I'm Jane Sonnenschein, 239 Plaza La Posada. I didn't come prepared to speak, so this is just throwing it out there. When I attended most of the meetings for the south part of the North Forty and was greatly disappointed with the amount of open space that was available and what was left. So I'm hoping that for the North Twenty, that someone considers more park-like space if we're talking about hotel and residents wanting to stay closer to where they're living without having to get into the car all the time. You need to put a park-like setting in there. And I don't think that we should be counting the parking lot mediums and the grass strips between buildings as open space as what was done on the first Phase One plan. That was really deeply disappointing. So I just, when I heard the conversation about what do we do with the rest of the land after we know that so many acres is going to be utilized for this next concept that's been talked about, some kind of park. I know it's pretty typical for a developer to have to do that as a requirement to develop a certain amount of land. And then also, just, I know for myself, when I go to a community meeting, while I do tend to read the thick stats that are given, I think that most people are very visual. And you had asked whether there should be some kind of a drawing versus reading the whole report, and I definitely encourage you to make sure that you have drawings. And sometimes when you can get the 3D drawing model as well as an additional page, that helps people visualize a lot. So that would help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further -- yes, a question for you. Councilmember Johnson?
Ms. Sonnenschein, hypothetically, if there is a proposal, say, you've heard the discussion regarding the hotel, there's an assertion that it needs to be higher, and I know that the proposal that Mr. Sedgwick was talking about many years ago was seven stories. Would you trade height for a minimum land coverage to gain more open space?
I think we need to avoid too much height. I don't live in that area. I won't be using that space, but I'm thinking about the traffic that all the residents and the hotel guests will be creating on our public streets if they want to go out and take a walk. Not everyone wants to walk down to the creek. Some people want a big, open space. I live off of Keto Road on the other side of town, and when they developed a large school, I think it's Campbell on Pollard, Knolls Pollard Road, that developer put in a lovely park. All the residents around there use that park. They're not getting out. And, well, there's no traffic problem down on that side of town, anyway. So, no, I wouldn't make it taller in order to allow space for a park.
Other questions? Okay, well, thank you. Maria Risto?
Hi, Maria Risto, eighty-five Broadway. I guess I have -- well, first of all, I have an observation. I think it was great to have the consultant here to talk about the hotel because there's so many factors that I think we hadn't considered. When you talk about turning different knobs, you know, what it allows and what it doesn't, I think it would have been instructive in the past. I don't think we'll have another opportunity but to have a consultant talk about affordable housing. Because when we talk about, you know, decreasing square footage, that'll make a unit affordable. Well, it won't if the land is expensive or if there's only three units being built on five acres. So I think there's still parameters we don't understand. That said, the two things I think should be amended is there should be more housing. I would like to see it go back up to the original three-hundred-and-sixty-four that was units that was proposed in the draft-specific plan. We have a target to build six-hundred-and-nineteen new homes by the end of our housing element, and I think we have at least three-hundred homes to go in the next five years. If we don't start making strides toward that, we're not going to achieve it. And I can't think of a place that's better for housing than here. We're right at the intersection of two freeways, minimize the total miles traveled. I was at a VTA meeting last night. There's discussion of putting potentially light rail or rapid bus line up the middle of eighty-five. Bascom is a potential node. If we have housing there, that can help drive it. So I think with housing and office there, we might have potential for public transit that people are complaining we don't have. The other thing is, I do think we should have more height. Unlike the previous speaker, in my mind, height does not increase traffic. Square footage does. So if we take the same square footage and allow a hotel to be taller, I think eight stories would be really tall, but maybe six stories. If we can get taller and narrower and space in between, I think it looks more interesting. If you're going to take the same square footage, why smash it down and crowd it up? I think a little variation, some height, some open space. And then, I'm not sure. I think you need to think about whether the sixty-thousand or sixty-six thousand square feet that are allowed in the Phase One really is sufficient. It's going to be down in the Phase One area. And my understanding is, right now, the residential in the northern part is going to be above retail or office. Well, I don't know if I would want to live in something just on top of an office. There needs to be coffee shops, restaurants, and other things mixed in. I think we really need to think about how do we make this entire project more attractive to walking than to driving? And how do we make it attractive for the nearby residents to walk there? And if we only have one area that has neighborhood serving, you're stuck with everybody having to go to one place. I think it needs to be spread out a little. And potentially, to have affordable restaurants, you need to have more than three of them. So those are my thoughts.
Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned three-hundred-and-sixty-four units. Is that three-hundred-and-sixty-four total, less, I think, the, I believe, the three-hundred-and-twenty that have already been approved?
I -- yeah, so I would --
Three-hundred-and-sixty-four total?
If I -- I'm saying, yes. Raise the total amount to three-hundred-and-sixty-four where we had started. So that would go up to four-ninety-two, I think, total, if a total density bonus was taken, with the understanding that every single place in town where housing is built, a density bonus can be taken. So...
So you actually jumped over to my next question, which, what does it turn out to be with the density bonus? Four-ninety-two total?
I, if I recall from last time around. I don't -- pull out your calculator.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you. Rod Teague?
Thank you, Rod Teague. Johnson Avenue. I wasn't planning to speak tonight because I was playing guitar, gigging for the Chamber of Commerce gig tonight. Boy, do they know how to party. No, it was fun. It was a lot of fun, but I didn't think I was going to be able to make it. But a couple of things that I do want to bring up is that, you know, one of my biggest fears is that the north, the north end is going to turn into a big retail commercial strip mall. And hence the reason for my involvement. So, you know, I think, I think really what the mission here is, you know, how do we get the highest amount of revenue with the least amount of impact? And that's why, you know, the hotel keeps coming up. I think that I agree that senior housing is needed. I have, my in-laws are selling their home right now, and they would love to live in Los Gatos. There's one senior home available in Los Gatos right now, the Los Gatos Commons. I think it's a six-hundred-thousand-dollar apartment-style living. So definitely, senior housing is needed. And, yeah, you know, with a hotel integrated with senior housing, with some more retail, minimizing the impact of that, that retail big-box model that generates a lot of traffic. And again, as we know, that if we go with that model, seventy-five percent of the traffic is going to be generated by the retail strip mall model. And again, Santana Row, they boast thirty thousand trips a day on average. You know, I wouldn't be standing here today if there wasn't a traffic issue and an overcrowding issue with schools. And, you know, it wouldn't even hit my radar. So I think it's, we just need to be very careful and formulaic with what we allow with that mission of, you know, the highest amount of revenue and with the least amount of impact. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Teague, I actually have notes from when you spoke in October. But I have notes on everybody, so. You said, you said not four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand square feet of commercial. You said three-hundred thousand square feet max, two-hundred thousand for hotel, one-hundred thousand for office retail. Now I hear you talking about a need for senior housing. Are these numbers different tonight? What are your thoughts in that regard?
No, no, not different at all because I think that retail component, that commercial component, the three-hundred thousand doesn't include the housing that needs to go there. So on top of the three-hundred thousand, we still have to provide housing. And, you know, it's, it's difficult with the amount of coverage even with a hotel. If you're only covering four acres with a two-hundred-room hotel, you know, obviously you have a lot more to do with the remaining acreage. So, you know, I, you know, I know there's a lot of leakage to stores like Targets and, you know, a lot of these big-box discount stores. But, you know, and not that I'm opposed to having, you know, a small Target-type retail store. It's just, I hope we can avoid making it that retail strip mall kind of mess.
Thank you.
Mr. Teague, I wanted to ask your comments on the actual plan because I know you've read it and you followed it. And Ms. Olson, and I asked the question of Ms. Olson, how do we get more community members to comment on what should be changed other than giving them the specific plan? And so one idea was various prototypes to comment on. One idea was a community meeting. In your mind, is that a way that you are, you think could be helpful to get your peers to come and weigh in on the specific words that should be changed based on what the words on the paper could actually turn into on a drawing?
Well, it's tough. You know, I certainly, I certainly can, you know, make posts on Town, Not City to generate interest on that. You know, people, it's, people are very reactive, and it's really hard to be, have that vision. You know, first of all, you have to take the time to read and understand what the specific plan is asking for, then you have to sort of formulate this in your mind as to what should go there. A lot of people don't really have the time to do that. And, you know, I would use the Town, Not City platform to obviously generate as much interest as I possibly can. You know, and that's the reason, again, why I'm here today is, after reading the specific plan, that is, you know, worded in such a way that, you know, this is a conforming development to Los Gatos, the look and the feel and all these great things. And I think we just want to do everything we possibly can to have it something that this community could be very proud of. And I think if it ends up being a big strip mall, that that's, you know, that's the mistake.
And one last question. I'm going to ask you the question on height. You heard, actually, I'm not sure if you did hear, if you were here when the hotel consultant spoke, and he talked about just the amount of money to the land is. And so height, giving up on height, for, by raising the height limit, you can actually free up more space. That's one possibility. What are your thoughts on that?
I, you know, height, I, you know, I'm fine with raising the height limitation. And I still think that the community can do something where the community could acquire a couple acres in there and do something for the community. After all this, you know, I think, I, a bond measure, I don't know. You know, some way to generate revenue to buy a couple acres to do something for the community would be the right thing to do.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Angelia Dornar?
Hello, Angelia Dornar, proud resident of Almont Grove. I just was writing notes during the presentation and during everybody's discussions here, and I just wanted to offer a few comments. As to the residential, I think we really have to think hard about increasing the number of total homes and what the densities could be, including the fact that people doing the commercial could actually get density bonuses as well, as I mentioned at the last meeting. The replacement housing, I think we need to make sure that we follow real compliance this time around, especially as to how many units are really going to be taken down. And the requirement does relate to the number of bedrooms of the units being replaced. So if there are three-bedroom homes there now, then we need to allow for some three-bedroom homes. Also, I think as far as limiting size and having some situation like that, there's age restrictions that are only fifty-five and older, which allow for a lot more flexibility in the requirements, like they don't all have to be together, they don't have to be defined that way. There's some different age categories that could be used as far as looking at doing that and coming up, coming back with the cluster kind of concept. Then the secondary unit language, you might want to look into some of that that's being reviewed by the Planning Commission right now because they have, the state has defined some things as far as square footage and limits on things like that. If we sort of parallel some of their language, that might be good. Residential hotel, I still think there's a great opportunity for something like an Embassy Suites, at least to be a part or a component. As far as the cost sharing, Good Sam would probably contribute towards residential, residence doctors, you know, doctors who are doing their residencies could live there. Good Sam might actually subsidize some of that. As far as some of the insurance plans, some of those actually subsidize the hotel costs, which would keep the ADR up. which would keep the ADR up on what we saw earlier. Also, as far as senior housing and the continuing care, the model of Merrill Gardens in Campbell is just fabulous. I mean, it really is a great, great facility. And so I think that someone needs to sort of look into that kind of a concept as well. Then I think also our jobs that have been approved in Santa Clara County compared to the lag of housing, I don't think we're going to have the kind of dip that he talked about before. And I think one of the primary things that we need to do before we increase community expectations is to find out who has options on the existing property. Who and what limitations are we really even trying to work with here? So I would be hopeful that the developer and/or current property owners would share their thoughts with us so that we don't go down a path that they're going to do what they want to do anyway.
Okay. You have questions? Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Mayor. You said something, you said something I just caught, 55 or older. What's that?
There are actually two different levels of age-restricted housing. If you recall, the apartments that we had in the first phase, all have to be together, they have to be identified, et cetera, et cetera. That's for a certain age up and it can only include residents as that. But similar to the commons, if it's 55 and older, it does not have the same limitations or restrictions that the, what we went through on Phase 1. And there could be people there that could have the smaller homes and still have families.
Thank you.
And I'll provide that to you if you'd like.
Any other?
I've got a good write-up for it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Dornar.
Thank you.
Shannon Hick, Shannon Hick? Hickock, sorry.
Hi, my name is Shannon Hickock. I live up in the mountains, but I work here at Good Samaritan Hospital. I work for a nonprofit organization called Access. And we provide support services to families who have loved ones hospitalized at Good Samaritan Hospital. So Mayor, you touched on the subject matter of housing for the families of hospital patients. And our program does provide some sort of assistance with local hotels. We provide food, we provide transportation. And one of the things that we do see a need for is some housing for patient families. So I wanted to comment on that. Good Samaritan Hospital has a Level 3 NICU. And so they see about 450 babies per year in their NICU. The other Level 3 NICUs are Stanford, UCSF, and El Camino Mountain View. And a lot of these families with these babies in the NICU, these parents are displaced from their homes because they want to be with their babies. And some of these babies are there for days, weeks, and months at a time. So a lot of these parents want to be by the baby's side as often as possible, but affordable housing, hotels in this area is very difficult for a lot of these families, especially for extended periods of time. So I just wanted to touch on the fact that there is, there is a need for such types of housing. I don't know that that has to be changed in the plans necessarily, but you commented on that. And so I wanted to just give you my input in terms of my experience with this nonprofit organization.
Great, thank you. I have a, and then I'll turn to Councilmember Johnson. Do you, are you familiar with the insurance programs that Ms. Dornar mentioned earlier that there are some insurances that'll help you pay for housing or hotel use? Are you familiar with intricate, the financial aspects of those?
In my experience, and I've been with the program for three years, we haven't had any insurance companies willing to pay for any off-site housing for these families.
Not even for extended pay patients for NICU?
Not that I've, no families have expressed that to us.
Okay.
It may, I personally had a situation where my daughter was injured at one point and we had to have off-site housing at a hotel in Texas. And our insurance company did not cover any type of housing. They covered the medical bills only, but not any kind of housing or extra costs associated with, with the hospital stay.
Wow, that's unfortunate. Councilmember Johnson?
You may not be familiar with this at all, but I'll see if you are. Good Sam is planning an expansion. And are you at all familiar with whether any of those plans include some kind of housing options?
They do not include any housing options. They're expansions. They've got expansions in the ER, they've got expansions, really that's the only big expansion. They're going to do some internal construction, but they're, none of the expansion includes housing.
Okay, thank you.
Number Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned some assistance for families that have to remain, let's say, here for an extended period of time. I believe you mentioned assistance in housing. You also mentioned hotel. Do you know the amount of assistance that's available to such a family?
So we have one program, it's very small. We have basically a single-dwelling RV that's on the premises at the hospital. And so just to give you an example, that was occupied 236 nights last year. I think this year, we're probably about 200 nights this year. And that's a single-dwelling only. And oftentimes, we have multiple requests for that particular RV. So there are opportunities where we can put some up and put someone in a hotel for an evening at a time. We don't have any really connections with hotels that allow us long stay, you know, weeks or months at a time. We are trying to negotiate some contracts with some hotels for that purpose going forward because the hospital's interested in making an investment in that, so.
Do you know how much the hospital currently does, if they give any monies, in assistance to people who have to stay in a hotel?
Not to my knowledge. There are local hotels that offer discounts. They aren't, I mean, I really appreciate what they do, but as the gentleman was talking about earlier in his presentation, hotels are willing to do a little bit, but it does come down to the end of the day to, you know, financial issue with them. But the hotels do offer discounts as much as they are able to. They have been generous with discounts.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our testimony for the evening. And we are going to take a 10-minute break and then we'll come back for council questions of staff and discussion and hopefully some direction.
So, let's start with questions of staff. Does any council members want to have any questions of staff? Councilmember Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Seok. I was just wondering how are we going to go about this in an organized fashion? For instance, the Planning Commission made a number of recommendations. We've heard testimony from the public. Are we going to go down like a chart spreadsheet like we did at our last meeting? Or how do we go about handling this?
Okay, so I'm going to ask all of us to turn to page five. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong. I'm looking at the end of the staff report with suggested areas for council discussion. I think what we need to talk about before we get into the specific word changes is and details that the Planning Commission moved forward are there's some larger issues that we still have to settle. And the biggest is the residential. We do have a finite amount that's remaining with the current specific plan. And so I think it would be helpful to hear from the council on is that the amount that we would like to continue with or is that an amount that we would like to change? I think there's some discussion on the hotel types. What I heard from our hotel consultant was once you design that, the amenities surrounding that are designed. So I think there's some general high-level discussion that needs to take place before we give specific direction to staff. But let's start with since, do you have any specifics that you wanted to raise?
Well, thank you. I think when it comes to the hotel, I liked the comments which were made by Mr. Sedgwick. I think that was kind of a right on the money. I am not interested in any more housing than is what's currently proposed. And one other high-level point, I'm not interested specifically at this time in reducing the amount of commercial space which was originally allocated. And I am interested in perhaps more outreach meetings to the neighborhood.
Okay, I'm going to go this way. Councilmember Johnson.
Okay, so if we're going to do high-end, I'm going to get very, very high-end. Thank you all for your comments and I think it's been helpful and our staff report has been helpful. And all of you have great ideas about what you would like to see there. And as I listen to all of you, what strikes me is that everything you've suggested is allowed under the plan. So the real issue is, well, how do we shape what's presented under the plan versus do we change the plan? And I always have some issue with, well, do we make it more specific so that the only possible thing that can go there is, I don't know, a Denny's? And then a developer doesn't want to put a Denny's in and now you don't have anything? Or I want this kind of business or that kind of business, which we cannot dictate because we're not the developer. So how does this plan change? And I know that there is discussion and impetus to change it, given what happened in the last one. But to me, it's a question of really, well, everything that I've heard can happen under this plan. So what is it that as a body for doing a conceptual structure for a piece of property that gets changed to make neighborhood serving or to make affordable restaurant or to make a certain kind of retail or to make a particular kind of housing unless it's age-restricted very specifically? But the housing can still change, as we heard, under the density bonus. A mixed-use housing project under our new state laws can get approved by objective standards. So what changes in this versus, you know, what you've all suggested? And so my difficulty is, well, gosh, you know, you have great ideas, but I don't know how this changes to accommodate that. I can see cleaning it up for some of the things that have been suggested and the language, but I don't know that it particularly needs to change. So that's kind of where I am. If it were, there were some insistence in changing it. I may go to the reduced project alternative that was in the EIR, which was 435 square feet of commercial, but that allowed up to 455 houses. And I don't know if we want to go there. So that's kind of where I am. And I don't know where the rest of the council is.
Okay, so let's go down with high level. And so I'm going to pick, God, Ms. Olson, just for a second here, just because I think what I would like to do is learn from the mistakes that we, or the lessons we learned from the first phase of the application, of the specific plan, actually. And what we learned was that we can all be, I can write something down and think, okay, this is absolutely crystal clear, yet the next person who reads what I write down may have a different interpretation. And what I don't want, what I absolutely don't want is the specific plan to be finalized and then we get an application and then we have a deadline and there's no longer opportunities for change. And so what I'd love is this opportunity, a middle opportunity, to share some ideas based on the discussion we had today as well as future, a community meeting, and actually have comments on what does this plan's next phase look like to the developer that actually has the rights to it currently? And what are some options? So that as we look at a design, we can say, yeah, that's a little bit too high for me. Or maybe I'd like more open space. And then you can actually have the discussion of if we are willing to go up one more foot, how much more green space do we get? In an ideal world, I'd love to have that type of a discussion before finalizing the specific plan. Based on what we heard today, I do think a hotel is reasonable and it could be the anchor for what the northern 20 acres would be. I don't want to compete with Hotel Los Gatos, but I agree that there's a happy space between Hotel Los Gatos and the Toll House. That's a different design that may appeal to millennials. And that hotel is at a price point that does have that shuttle, that magical shuttle that will bring people downtown so that we don't just create a synergy on one part of Los Gatos versus another. So right now, that's where I'm thinking. And if I were to change anything currently tonight, I'd like more opportunity and flexibility in Table 2-2 when we look at our office space. There's a lot of discussion right now about maker spaces and having flexibility, whether it's retail or commercial frontage, to accommodate the incubator space we've always talked about but don't necessarily have within our town zoning. So that's right now where I'm leaning towards. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So high level and then a little bit specific. So one of the things that I supported originally was the idea that we wanted neighborhood serving and we also wanted to capture as much of the leakage of sort of general merchandising and some of the other things that were leaving town. I'm sort of giving up on capturing the general leakage because I don't think that that kind of mall is really going to sell very well in town. You know, we've got a lot of people that are worried about our finances and the coming pension, you know, increased expenses and liabilities. And that would be one way to address that is to try to capture more of that leakage. I don't even see them out here saying anything about it either. So if I say, okay, we're not going to try to get, you know, originally we talked about medium boxes. We didn't want large boxes. We didn't think that was Los Gatos. We talked about medium boxes at an REI or something like that. I'm still not hearing that that's really what we want. So I'm kind of thinking, if I let that go in my mind, then what is neighborhood serving? Well, I don't think we need as much retail space to do neighborhood serving than is originally allowed. So I'm okay if we change that formula somewhat. One of the things that, again, back in the very beginning, I think when I first came on council, that I liked the idea of, we kept talking about senior move-down units. And that was, we can't dictate, we can't dictate an age from here. A developer can come in and say it's going to only be that. But we, by law, can't say this must be senior-only kind of thing. But we can facilitate and say we'd like to see those kinds of units that would be friendly to seniors. And so that's things that are single-story. And this move-down unit idea that was in the past that kind of died was the single flats with an elevator to get people up to them. So as you're aging and you don't want the stairs or you can't do the stairs anymore or you're worried in 10 years you won't be able to get up the stairs anymore, there'd be elevators in it. So that was one of the things that I really liked in the original plan. And that pretty much died when we limited the height to 35 feet. You know, we ended up in the South 20 with kind of this squashed down. Because of the price of land, you end up building more of it. So I would like to see us do something to allow the move-down units to occur again. It's either, you know, I'm thinking either allow 45 feet for those types of buildings. And it's probably 45 feet plus some extra feet for the mechanical, the top of the elevator shaft and so forth. I don't know if that ends up at 50 feet or 52 feet or whatever it is. Maybe worded as main building 45-foot max plus the mechanical. Something to enable the move-down to occur. When I've talked to the developers, they are interested in that if they can make it work. They can't make it work with 35 feet. That was clear. We didn't get it. I still would like to explore that for what's left out there. I would like to add, bring us back to our original 364 that was allowed on the site. We moved it down to 270. Let's skip the bonus parts. You know, there's more that can come with the density bonuses. But the language was 270 allowed that we took down from 364. I'd like to go back to the 364. I think, again, if we're not trying to go capture the leakage from the town, the general merchandising leakage and so forth, then you've got more space for more housing, which is a less intense use anyway, going to be less intense for traffic. So I'd like to see us move in that way and encourage more of that instead of the, you know, the bigger, the medium boxes we thought might go out there. Let me check my notes just for a sec. I think the other thing I would note is, again, when we went to 35 feet, the original zoning out there, the zoning now, I think technically it's specific plan zoning, but the original zoning was, I think, highway commercial, which is a 45-foot limit. So we actually went below a typical general plan limit, if I understand correctly. I'm sure somebody will correct me if I'm wrong. So I don't think the 35 feet was some magical number that we should have stayed at. The second part is, I think, you know, everybody seems to like the hotel and we heard maybe you can do it at 45 feet. It's sounding like we ought to add more for the hotel also than the 45 feet to help make sure we get the possibility of the hotel. Yes, maybe we can squeeze it in. I don't think it's good enough to make sure it happens. I also really like the, and there was original language that we took out when we limited the height to 35 that said, if you give us more open space, you can have more height. So maybe we don't just say you can have 45. We say you can have 45 if you give us more open space. And I like the idea of getting, you know, you got to pay for the land. So if you can do more height, that means less land needs to have building on it and it can be open for parks or, you know, I like the idea of a park out there, more sort of big usable space, but we've got to pay for it by allowing some more height if we really want that land. I think I'm kind of exhausted my thoughts for now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two questions of staff and then some general statements. There was a statement made that there is a potential for a density bonus for commercial. Could you please weigh in on that?
Yes, thank you. I believe Ms. Dorner was speaking about AB 1934, which if you come in with affordable housing in conjunction with a commercial project, generally you can have up to a 20% bonus on the commercial side for various topic areas, height, reducing parking, square footage, some of those things.
Concessions.
Yes, concessions. Thank you.
And then there was also testimony about housing for, and this came up several times, housing for those who are 55 or older. The Commons was used as an example at least once, maybe twice. What rights does the town have with regard to something like the Commons versus the discretion of the developer?
So I believe as we spoke about before, and Mr. Schultz can weigh in as well, we can't dictate that it has to be that. If a developer comes forward with a project and says we are going to restrict it, then that is appropriate. You could also add language encouraging it or even potentially incentives, but we can't require that there be senior affordable housing.
We could have incentives? Is that what I heard you say?
We could.
All right, those are my two questions. And now some general thoughts as others have said, high level. I support a hotel there. I've supported a hotel there since we first started working on this in, what, 2010? And it has always been something that the community has been comfortable with. I think that, I think that the report we had from the consultant was very helpful. As with Mr. Leonardis, I thought that Mr. Sedgwick's testimony was compelling in the sense that we can use three acres. We don't have to increase the height above 45 feet. But in any event, in a simple sense, a hotel is very acceptable to me. The other thing that is acceptable to me now, and it always has been, and it's something that in the years that this specific plan has been considered, is our offices and sometimes specifically incubator units. So that is something that is acceptable to me and that I would be able to support. Right now, I'm having concerns about residential and adding more residential on the north part of the property in addition to what's already there on the south part of the property. Understanding that whatever number we put there can become a higher number by way of the density bonus, can become a different, larger, whatever, by virtue of the concessions. So given those parameters, right now, I am not prepared to support residential based upon what I've heard. I think it's important going forward that we protect the existing units, however the law allows us to do that. With regard to the square footage, we have Table 2-2 on our commercial. I'm good with the 250,000 square feet. With regard to the additional 400,000 square feet, I'm not prepared to go there yet. So that'd be a total of 650 less what's already there. So I'm not there yet. Let's see, the innovation hub is always appealing. Additional green open space, green open space as opposed to what the specific plan currently allows, which is all different types of open space, some of which is gray and cement. And lastly, nobody has talked about this specifically, but as someone who travels quite a bit, what you need when you arrive someplace at 10 o'clock at night, you need a place to get your milk and your coffee and your bagels. And if we're going to have a hotel, if the hotel doesn't necessarily have that opportunity within it, then I think that should be the kind of market that would be, would be very well-used in the northern part of the property.
So I'm going to see if I can help direct this towards something that may be helpful to staff. Right now, I'm hearing a variety of things. So please correct me, Council, as I try and summarize where we're at. We have, it sounds like we have consensus on a hotel, based on what we've heard and based on the discussion that, the high-level discussion here. What it sounds like from the report is that a hotel requires something around it. And right now, in the current specific plan, without amending it, it does allow residential and it allows certain amount of commercial that we've discussed, the types of offices, the types of retail. The retail may be changing anyway just because of the retail economy that today's environment dictates. But I'm going to throw something out to the council members and see what you think. Given what's in front of us in the current specific plan, what are your thoughts on asking the developer that currently has rights on it, a design concept so that we actually have something to comment on versus trying to envision something based on the words that are currently in the specific plan? Councilmember Spector and then Johnson.
I have no, I'd have to look to Mr. Schultz on a, to weigh in on this legally. For some reason, and I think it's from a legal reason, but maybe from a practical reason, having an application that is, that application would have to be within the current specific plan. And so I don't know that I am prepared to entertain a application or a pseudo-application without amending the specific plan. And so therefore, it would be, have to be without amending the specific plan, and so therefore it would be, have to be consistent with the specific plan. So I don't see it, I don't understand it, and I can't appreciate it from a process issue.
Okay. Let me just, and let me reward it. And I'm definitely not thinking of a, of an application. I think what we learned last time is, once you open, once you submit an application, you trigger deadlines. What I want is the opportunity to comment on designs, and I don't know if there's a specific verbiage, but legally, what are we allowed to do, whether it's with our own, our own staff making crude drawings based on these ideas versus asking a potential developer how to envision, how to make the words in the specific plan into a design that actually works.
So with commercial, you have much more leeway to require whatever process you want. What tied our hands last time was the Housing Accountability Act, and there's already been changes to that that might not have applied, and that's that language of it being a multi-mixed-use project. You remember, it had the definition of neighborhood-serving retail, and that's been changed to a percentage, I believe, I can't remember the exact percentage, but I don't even think it's going to apply under our current specific plan, where the percentage of residential, if it came in mixed use, wouldn't even be, fall under the Housing Accountability Act. So if you put that aside now, and you're looking at it just from a commercial standpoint, you have much more leeway to look at how you want to, what process you want to go through on, on whether that's a pre-submital application to look at a design or whatever you need to do. You can, you can change that process.
Is there something beyond, even before a pre-submital? Is there something just to talk about designed, to see if things actually make sense?
You could require early workshops. That could be also put into the work, into the process.
Councilmember Jensen, and then Leonardis.
Two observations. One, if I were a developer, I don't know that I'd want to bring five samples for people to comment on and have them all shot down. I might be better off just doing an application. I get the concept. It's an interesting concept, but I don't know how that ends up working. Having participated in the advisory committee for this, having participated in Los Gatos Boulevard, Shiretts, it's an interesting concept, but it often doesn't work in practice, so I don't know how that would work. My other comment about, we need to change the specific plan, okay, because we all like hotel. Well, Table 2-2 says office/hotel, 250,000 square feet. So I guess my question is, is that enough? Or does the commercial, it's only limited to office and hotel? So if we wanted to do incubators, office, and a hotel, does that mean that 250,000 square feet needs to get changed? That's the kind of thing that I would say, okay, there's an amendment that may make sense, given what people want, but a hotel can happen under this plan, as can office. So I'm still struggling with what needs to get changed.
Okay. Councilmember Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor. I was thinking that if the developer were interested, they could provide two or three models of concepts. We had the model out in the lobby here for a while for the Phase 1, and provide those in a format where the public can look at it, all within the parameters of the existing specific plan. So that would be an idea that I would support.
I'm going to ask the question of staff. Does such a, what, I know we're making things up as we go, but Ms. Pravetti, given your experience with specific plans, what is an in-between that allows more discussion on ideas without triggering an application, thus the deadlines associated with it?
So as our town attorney mentioned, we could certainly modify the process that's in the specific plan to require pre-application meetings with the community before application submittals, so that way folks could weigh in on design concepts. I think a lot of developers do that in a more private setting, but if we required it, it would be a more open, public process, and then the council or whoever the deciding body could see how the developer actually reflected the comments. I think for the process that we're in now, we have a couple of data points to just keep in mind. One is, we do have a moratorium in effect, so we do need to show progress with any amendments to the specific plan. Two, there's a lot of ideas, and I think we're starting to get a sense as to where the council might be on some of them. And then I think, third, to visualize all of the different permutations with the plan that's already before us, you know, we could, we would do our best, or a developer or a consultant would do their best in terms of an urban design plan, but I would just caution that it may not actually reflect what an actual development application would be. So it would be purely conceptual, and then we might find ourselves in another situation of managing expectations or having disappointment if a plaza or a green space isn't exactly next to the red barn or right, right where somebody had really had their hopes up. So I think part of it is, how do we structure a specific plan so we create a development capacity that gets us what the town wants, but recognizes that this is only part of the process? So setting down the rules is really important, but you're going to see future development applications. The planning commission will see future development applications, and that's really where you're going to get to the specifics that I think we heard testimony about tonight. You're not going to get to those specifics still at the specific plan level, because there's so many variables and so many permutations. It's very hard to forecast exactly what that's going to visualize.
Any comments, any questions? Councilmember Jensen.
I just have a question about the concept of somebody bringing in concepts. Let's say a developer brings in three concepts, and people look at it, and one of them ends up being an application, and we haven't changed our processes. Does that now become the, whenever they provide that concept, that ultimately comes the application? You know, because we had discussion on, oh, what was the date you actually brought this in? And it was the concept, and then it became it. So if there were concepts, does that become the date? Ultimately, it becomes, it's not it. It's one of three, and then it becomes it. So if they bring it in tomorrow, is that the date that it's, you know, their final plan or whatever it is that we used for 2013 for the last one?
Well, it's a good question. I think, again, the town is fortunate in that it already has a pre-application process. We could require conceptual development advisory committee meetings for any future development application and require in, at the CDAC that they bring more than one option. So that way, it's a robust discussion at CDAC. We have started to notice those meetings to the 300-foot to get more community engagement early on. So we could use a standing process to vet that, and that's clearly before an application submittal.
Okay. Councilmember Spector, and then the vice mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Following up on what you were saying, Ms. Pravetti, if somebody came into the CDAC with, let's say, three conceptual developments, would those conceptual developments be evaluated by the committee members, by the CDAC, in light of the current specific plan or some other paradigm?
Well, if the council, after all of this, chooses not to amend the specific plan, they would only, they could be evaluated only by the plan that is in effect at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I mean, I like your idea of being able to visually look at things. I think the, a couple challenges. First of all, I'll say, the developer was involved, you know, a lot giving their comments when we developed the specific plan, and then we heard, because people didn't like the results for Phase 1, we heard lots of criticism that the developer developed the specific plan. So, you know, you're kind of inviting them to develop the specific plan some more, and I didn't really like that criticism the time before. The second part of my comment, if we really want the developer, and maybe it's staff instead, but they're probably going to ask the developer, you know, to give some, some drawings or some ideas, it's a fair, it's a fair bit of work, but they need to know what direction to go. And when I've talked to them recently, they can't tell which way the council wants to go. I just said, "I'd like to give them more height so you can have a move-down unit," but they, they don't know if there's three votes here to allow that, so they don't know if they should make a drawing to show that. We might decide to limit it to 100, you know, 100,000 square feet of commercial, and they don't know if that's going to happen, you know, and they might come back with some plan that has more than that. So I don't think we've, to get more of it, I think we maybe need to flesh out, where is the council willing or planning to make changes? Because I don't think that there's enough, you know, enough for them to even guess to start to give us some, some concepts.
Councilmember Jensen, and then Spector.
Again, my overall is, I'm not sure why we would need to change it, but to go with the vice mayor, if I look at Table 2-2 and I say, "Okay, 250,000 square feet is not enough for incubator office and a hotel, so perhaps that needs to change." The total retail, maybe that needs to change, given our economic study that we got, thank you very much, Ms. Renn, because we don't have boxes anymore, and we have a different way of conceptualizing that. Then I go to 2.5.2 building height, maximum height of any building excluding affordable housing, and hotel uses is 35 feet. Then it goes on to say, a hotel can be 45 feet. So if with the vice mayor, we want to say, we want more flexibility in height, then, okay, maybe those are things that get changed in the specific plan to follow through on what the council is talking about. But, you know, I'm not sure those things need to happen, but that's, I would imagine that if we're thinking about changing it, that's the kind of discussion we have to have versus, "I would like to have neighborhood-serving businesses and affordable restaurants," which I can have. So how do I change this plan? If I need to. So the heights are set here. We could change them if we felt like it. The distribution of the square footage for commercial and office and hotel is set forth in the table. We could change that. We could change requirements for bringing things into CDAC or previewing it in some fashion. I could see that, because we have a processes section. But I have difficulty in just saying, "I'd love to see this," and having that not translated to something that requires a change.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Ms. Jensen and Mr. Rennie, to the extent that it may be more comfortable for us if we could, you know, have a developer or somebody show us some concepts, so that before we make decisions on the specific plan, we could see where we might be going. But from a process perspective, I don't think that could work. I actually do not think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I, I agree, however, I agree, however, that the potential changes on the specific plan are fairly, could be fairly general. We could, you know, Barbara might say, "I don't want any more residential," and further people say, "I want as much residential as I can get." Some of the very high, quote-unquote, "high-level" decisions, there are not that many, and once those are made or are turned down, then the application can come forward.
Okay. So I'm going to post some, Councilmember Leonardis, and then I'm going to post some high-level questions to the council, so that we can start to see where we are. Go ahead, Councilman.
Well, thank you, Mayor Sac. I was going to suggest a list and then kind of a tally of votes, bring, with respect what the vice mayor said and what Councilmember Spector just said, but then you brought forth your idea, so.
So it's a meshing of both. How's that?
Sounds good.
Okay. So let's start, I'm going to start with residential. Right now, and I'm going to, the caveat is that we're trying to work under, my favorite word, the guardrails of the EIR, where there are various options that are movable, but ultimately, the total traffic load that was analyzed in the EIR cannot change, otherwise we have to redo that. So the first question is, one option, a high level, is to increase residential, thus decrease commercial. Who would be supportive of that idea?
Okay. A question?
Yes.
Why is it an either-or?
Actually, you could do both, but you can't add more commercial. You have to give somewhere, I'm looking at the traffic analysis.
You just want to get in the EIR?
No, I want to make sure we don't overstep our EIR. So, Mr. Paulson, if you can remind us, what are the, what's the ultimate threshold that we can't cross?
So from a residential perspective, you can go up to 364, which would not require a modification to the commercial numbers that are currently in the specific plan. The specific plan looked at 580,000 square feet, and we reduced that down to 435 ultimately of new, and so that was part of the environmentally superior alternative that was evaluated. And so you would still be within that realm, and it does not require a reduction in commercial.
Okay. So as long as we stay within those maximums, okay. So first question to council. Yes, Councilmember Johnson.
A question about that. For example, the office hotel is a component of that 435. If the ratios in that table were changed, would that, so let's say we said 300,000 square feet office or 500,000, would that change the EIR traffic? Because an office got a different traffic count than whatever.
Yeah, that could. So the high-level numbers that were used in the EIR were 150-room hotel, and so the traffic for hotel is based on per room. And then the maximum office that was studied was 125,000 square feet, but that was split in between general office and medical office, which medical office came off the table. So we still have a box that probably still has some trips that could be reallocated, but we'd have to do that analysis based on what the council desired from an amendment perspective.
So then in terms of process, the direction that we give you tonight, ultimately, you would have to go back and look and make sure that we're within the thresholds, the maximum thresholds.
That's correct.
Okay. So again, council now, understanding that its direction, that has to be further analyzed. Let's just go into the land use types. And let's see, just by show of hand, who would be, again, in favor of increasing residential on the site? Okay. So we have two. Yes, Councilmember Spector.
And just, I want to make sure we're all on the same page. When you say increasing residential, increasing it from what number, and what is that number based upon? Is it based upon the current specific plan? Is it based upon a density bonus? Is it based upon concessions? What is that number?
Moving from the, the numbers that I'm working from is from the current specific plan. And then I, to me, it's undetermined what the, what's the number, the maximum residential, but I just wanted to see if there was any appetite of increasing any residential. And so that answers that, too. Okay. So right now, we're looking at a hotel of 150 rooms, which was comparable to what was discussed. Would anyone like to see any movement of that to make a larger hotel? Okay. So there's five. And then I guess, and please correct me, Mr. Paulson, if that were to be increased, then because the, the office numbers would have to be decreased, if, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so based on how many rooms, we would need to know how many more rooms?
That's correct. And so I think the realm that was discussed in the study was 150 to 200.
Okay.
So if the council's comfortable with the maximum of 200, then we can look at those parameters from a traffic perspective. I think the other concept with this table and all of this discussion is, these are maximums for these categories, so you're not, you cannot achieve the maximum in each of these categories under the specific plan. So if a hotel, for instance, comes in and takes up 200 rooms and takes up that traffic, you're not going to be able to have as much office or as much general commercial, because there are basically levers, which we talked about before. Once you pull one, it, it trips another one, and so we would have to do those analyses when an application came forward.
Okay. And so I just want to see, where's everyone's appetite to go to that 150 to 200 max hotel, just by show of hand? Maximum 200 rooms, basically. Okay? Okay. And then with regard to the hotel, who is looking, who is willing to look at increasing the height limit if it means more open space? Okay. So you have three. And so I put that height limit with hotel, but who is interested in looking at a overall relaxation of height limit for more open space period? relaxation of height limit for more open space period? Okay, so just two. So right now, it looks like hotel, there's a possibility, not for anything else. Right now, with residential, there's a specific parameter that residential has to be above retail. Who would like to eliminate that, so that we can look at alternative types of housing? Okay, we have four. And then with regard to the retail numbers, is, would anyone like to look at either, I guess, at this point, Mr. Paulson, I'm looking, if we're looking at raising the hotel, really, retail would be a reduction, or can that stay the same?
We'll have to do that evaluation. It may be able to stay the same, but you may just want to inquire whether or not there is any appetite for reducing or increasing if there is any space in that cap.
Okay. So with regard to retail, I'm going to ask a couple of questions. One is the overall total square footage. Who's looking, who wants to look at changing those numbers? Yes, Councilmember Specter?
Madam Mayor.
Yes?
Madam Mayor, I'm looking at Table 2-2. That has office hotel at 250,000 square feet, and then it has other things, including retail, at 400,000 square feet. I would increase office and either decrease the whole amount of commercial or decrease some of it. But right now, we don't, we are off that chart, so to speak.
Okay. And so I'm going to ask a question of staff. Really, to do the traffic analysis, do you need to look at, by increasing hotel to 200 rooms, what's left, and then, and then we have to divvy up what's left? Or is it best to look at a reduction in retail and/or office at this point?
I'm not sure if my PPW colleagues are raising their hands, but assuming they're not yet, I think there's a lot of moving parts here, because you have the 250, you have the 400, but the max cap for new is 435.
Right.
So the amount studied in the specific plan is, you know, 580. So we have some cap under the EIR, and, but it's going to be, you know, running different models of scenarios from a square footage perspective. And we can run some rough ones and see what flexibility we have there. But again, a lot of it's going to be this challenge that we talked about, you know, a few meetings ago, which is if someone comes through the door with a hotel and an office of X, that will, in and of itself, reduce the amount of additional commercial, general commercial that can come forward.
Okay. So let me ask just a very even more general question. Who would like staff to run those numbers, so that we can at least see rough calculations? If the hotel goes up to 200 rooms, what's the capacity left for office and/or retail? Okay. So there's, yes, Councilmember Johnson.
Question for staff, and I apologize, I'm going to go back to my previous question and see if I can get a different, or at least an answer that I understand better. If I'm talking about just changing what's within the box, so if the, does that, do I then have to run numbers, because an office has X number of trips versus a restaurant has Y number of trips? So I can't just change the box that says 250 to 300, or change the box that says 400 to 200, and put in a different box for office that says 100?
You actually could, because there's also the caveat that says it can't exceed the trips that were studied in the EIR. So you could do that. If you want to just have a little bit more information, then we can just look at those numbers roughly. But there are other opportunities that, that handle that, so that we don't go above and beyond what's analyzed in the EIR.
Okay. So thank you. So Madam Mayor, I raise my hand that I would like that analyzed, because I think what I'm hearing is a different configuration of that square footage.
Okay. So just again, who would like staff to just, if we go up to 200-room hotel, just a rough calculation, analysis of what the different, different examples 2.2 can lead to? Okay, so you have five there. Yes, Council Vice Mayor.
So I, you know, information's always good, but I want to be careful that we don't assume we're going to get a 250-room hotel, and we've limited everything else, because you got to leave enough flexibility that a good application can come, come forward. So it's good to know if we get 250, but I would be opposed to limiting the other categories, assuming we're getting exactly a 250-room hotel, or 200, whatever your number you said.
Yes, and comment noted. And again, this would just give us more information before a final decision is made. Yes.
If I could just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
From the, the vote that was just taken, the raising of hands, it's implied that that's still within the 435,000-square-foot cap? Or did you also want to study the potential of using some of the additional EIR capacity and what those square footages might result in?
That's a great clarification. Thank you. I was presuming under the existing 435, but if anyone is, let's ask the question. Is anyone looking to increase 435 to up to 580? Okay, none. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, we've also talked about height, we've looked at retail. Are there, are there any other high-level areas that any of the council members think would be useful to have other council members weigh in on? Yes, Councilmember Leonardis.
One quick question. So what is the remaining housing capacity that we are allowed at this time, considering the amount of housing that's being put in the Phase One?
So that's 33 units left in the 270 cap, and then it could be up to, I believe it's 45, if someone applied for a density bonus.
Thank you. That's what I thought.
And, Mr. Paulson, the way it's currently written, that 30, those, that 33 has to be above retail, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yes, but I understood that we had raised our hands with whether, as to whether we'd consider changing that for alternative designs.
Okay. And staff, I'm going to look towards staff. Is there any suggested high-level land use discussion items you think are worthy, when you're looking at revising the specific plan, at least the land uses that are in Table 2-2, as well as just the broad level uses that are in the, in the plan?
I guess one that comes to mind was brought up at Planning Commission, and council discussed it this evening, and Mr. Sedgwick brought it up as well. Continuum of care facilities is not currently listed in the permitted uses, and so whether or not the council would be interested in that type of facility being either permitted or permitted with a conditional use permit.
Okay. And is that, remind me, that is considered a business, a commercial?
It would be commercial square footage.
Commercial square footage, and it would have to be included in our table for an allowable, a permitted use?
That's correct.
Okay. So after hearing Mr. Paulson's question, who would like that to be looked at as a permissible use? Raise your hand.
Well, I had a question.
Okay. So Councilmember Specter, why don't you ask your question?
I, I did not, I do not understand the logistics, land use logistics of continuum, continuum of care. So it'd be considered a commercial use?
That's correct.
All right. And I, I'm probably going to raise my hand, but can you just give me, I'm looking at this table now on 2-2. If there was such a care facility, do you have any concept of how large it would be, just generally?
We don't, but we can come back to you with some information on some existing facilities in town. We have two.
All right. And so in reply to you, Madam Mayor, I would be raising my hand for that information.
Okay. So again, if we could just do a show of hands, who would be willing to put it under a commercial permitted use? Okay, so we have four. Okay. Yes, Councilmember Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Sack. There's a conversation earlier in the evening about the maker space, the incubator space. What category would that be under?
So the incubator space would be an office use, so that would be captured under the office. And the makers would depend on the type of, the makers, it could fall in general commercial. It would just depend on the specific use.
Thank you.
Okay. So then I'm going to ask a follow-up question to that, to either you or Ms. Wren. Given the, the recent seminar you guys attended, is there, in your opinion, a need to change that, to make it more flexible and broad?
Given, given much of the discussion that's been happening in the professional industry around retail, flexibility really is most ideal. As you've all indicated tonight, it's setting ground rules of kind of sizes of overall pads is, is something that people can work within, but to look at specific uses or to look at really saying, you know, only 100 can be makers and only 100 can be incubator is really, puts anybody in a position where it might be hard to fill that space six months down the road, or maybe even six years down the road. So looking at the ability to stay dynamic with the retail industry, and retail meaning any sort of commercial or food retail type use.
Okay. So then if I were to, my understanding then, based on your answer, is that, given the high-level changes we're asking Mr. Paulson to do at this moment, it does not preclude anything?
Yeah, that's correct. So even talking about the amenities with the hotels and all of that, if you just look at a broad cap, I think that that then gives the developer the ability to kind of look at what, what works with whatever hotel they have come in, and whatever kind of amenities could match those, match their plan. So it's hard. I think giving that broad envelope and that broad ceiling really makes the most sense, rather than trying to get to the nitty-gritty of each category.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last high-level question I want to ask council members of the process, would there be support of changing the process so that CDAC, two CDAC meetings be held before an official application is submitted?
Does it have to be two?
Um, I, for, yes, I would like two, because sometimes the first one isn't going to be well-attended.
As opposed to 10?
Oh, I, I'm thinking at least a minimum of two, is what I was suggesting.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm open to the number as a minimum of two. So would there be support in changing the process, so that would be instituted into the specific plan? Okay, so you have four there. And then any other changes that anyone would like to propose at this stage? Okay. And I look to staff again, is there anything that you need to be captured before you take this back for further analysis?
I guess the only other item potentially would be whether or not, I think we heard this evening from both the public and the council, whether or not we want to increase the green open space requirement from the current 20% to some other number. And just for everyone's information, the current requirements in the specific plan is 30% of open space, and 20% of that has to be green open space.
And can clarify, my understanding is parking lots are not included, but can you please clarify?
Parking lots are not included in the hardscape portion of open space or open space at all.
Okay. Councilmembers, would anyone like any suggested changes to the open space requirements? Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Paulson. And any others? Okay, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Johnson.
It's just a request for staff, and I don't know if this is too hard, let me know. But in doing the analysis for the, how traffic counts work, or if we change the boxes around, there are lots of ways to do traffic counts. There are alternatives, the town has its own alternatives. When we did the EIR, there's alternatives for evaluating mixed-use projects that we used previously. So I, at least for me, it'd be helpful to have something in addition to the ITE box, if that's possible, or is it not possible? I know we did it, we did a urban, I forget what it was, there was a, for the last EIR, we requested specific alternatives to doing those traffic counts. And I don't know if it makes a difference with changing retail, with a different kind of office model, et cetera, as to what those traffic things would be, and how traffic counts get captured ideally in a mixed-use environment. So I'd just be looking for different numbers, except, aside from flipping over the manual, is what I'm asking for.
Thank you. Lisa Peterson, Town Engineer. Ultimately, in order to do that, it would require an analysis of other office, you know, similar types of facilities. That's how that other analysis is done. So that would be something that would probably require us to hire, talk to our traffic consultant, TJKM.
So never mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then because this is something that, obviously, this is going to be continued, we don't know what the date certain is. Excuse me. So we would probably just re-advertise when the next meeting would be, so that those that are interested will be able to have that opportunity to weigh in into the staff analysis, as well as further comments onto what the staff report provides. Okay. And Mr. Schultz, would that follow, would that be, in your opinion, legally adequate to show momentum with our moratorium in place?
Yes, as long as we continue to make progress towards this, which we did tonight. We made great progress tonight, and we'll bring it back, you know, as soon as we're able to.
Okay. Any final comments, questions from council? Okay. Well, for the very last time, I'm adjourning tonight's meeting.